Excellent, thank you for that. Good morning, everybody. Welcome, well, good afternoon even. Welcome to Development Plan Panel. I'm councillor Neil Walsh, who head in main High Park Ward, and I chair this panel. You're almost very welcome and welcome to anybody watching us on the world wide web. 7.2 billion potential viewers, so you never know. So we've got a lot to get through today. So what I will do is we'll go through a few introductions as per normal. And I've got my chair script. But just before we go through some introductions, just we have two new members to our happy band. We have councillor Helen Hayden, who can introduce themselves when we go through their names in alphabetical order. And we have councillor Kayleigh Brooks, who are joining us and replacing councillors Lisa Mulherin and councillor Sal Arif respectively. So you're most very welcome to us, to join us. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Lisa and Sal for all their efforts over the last few years and the sterling work they've done, and wish them very well in their new roles. So, without further ado, so, I've got a few, a few as usual prepared words, just so we can square away the legal side of things with regard to our remote meeting. So I'd like to start today, the meeting today by confirming that this meeting of Development Plan Panel meets the requirements of the council's constitution, even though members of the panel are in remote attendance. Well, this item today will be fully discussed, as is usual. Remote attendance requires a few slight changes to how I manage the debate. Therefore, can all attendees mute their microphones unless I invite them to speak? This will avoid disruption due to background noise. Can all participants please keep their cameras on during the meeting? Unless you're having connectivity problems, then we appreciate that sometimes cameras need to go off. And all participants, as I mentioned earlier, will be invited to introduce themselves at the start of the meeting. And so make it clear to public observers who's involved. And members wishing to ask questions and make comments should do so by using the raise hand facility. And I will, as always, endeavour to see those in the order that they appear. So, can I ask for your assistance while I go through the remainder of this process? So we need to adopt a deputy chair, just in case my internet goes down. And I suggest, as always, councillor Kevin Ritchie, and invite another member to second that motion. Folks.
Second Chair.
Thank you very much. And, and I'll call for vote by asking for silences approval. Look, if anyone's got anything to object to that, please say. Nope. Good. Excellent. Let's do some introductions. So we'll go through in the highly original, exciting alphabetical order. So that starts with councillor Anderson.
I'm Sir Barry Anderson, Adlington Ward.
Thank you very much. Councillor Brooks.
Councillor Kayleigh Brooks, Little London and Woodhouse Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Campbell. Are we missing a councillor Campbell at the present time? We are, aren't we?
He's on the call, Chair, but it looks like he's taking a phone call at the moment.
No worries. He's most welcome to join us when he can. Councillor Carter.
I'm Andrew Carter, Carverley and Farsley Ward, Leader of the Opposition.
Thank you. Councillor Collins.
Councillor Dawn Collins, Horseford Ward.
Thank you. And we've got apologies from councillor Finnegan. So councillor Gruen.
Councillor Caroline Gruen, Bramley and Stanley Ward.
Councillor Hayden, thank you very much, Caroline. Councillor Hayden.
Councillor Helen Hayden, Temple East. And I accept members for climate change and for unsustainable, thank you.
Thanks for that. There was a wee bit of lag on your voice there, Helen, so. I don't know if there's anything you can do about that.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah. Oh, it's gone now. So there you go.
Is it okay now?
It's a bit wobbly. Feel free to knock, feel free to knock off your camera if you want to.
Obviously a gremlin.
Yeah, yeah.
Lovely, thank you.
No worries. Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Jim McKenna, Armley Ward.
Thank you very much. And councillor Ritchie.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Kevin Ritchie, Bramley and Stanley Ward. Thank you.
Thank you. So officers, Mr Carl's given his apologies. So Mr Elliot.
Afternoon, Chair. Martin Elliott, Head of Strategic Planning.
Mr Feeney.
Good afternoon, everybody. David Feeney, Chief Planning Officer for Leeds.
Thank you. Mr Harvath.
Good afternoon, everyone. Adam Harvath, Group Manager for Policy and Plans.
Thank you very much. Ms Walker.
Good afternoon. Nicole Walker, Legal Advisor to the panel.
Thank you. Ms Harry.
Good afternoon. Janet Howery, Principal Planner, Policy and Plans.
Thank you very much. And lastly, Ms Hallwell.
So Hallwell, Principal Planner, here for the second item.
Lovely. Thank you. Thank you so much. So go through the next couple of bits of regular housekeeping, so. Right, so, Tash, moving to item number one.
Thanks, Chair. So there are no appeals against refusal of inspection of documents. Under Agenda Item Number Two, there are no items which require the exclusion of the press and public. Under Agenda Item Three, with your agreement, Chair, a formulated item of business has been received and papers were circulated to the panel prior to the meeting in terms of Agenda Item Seven, Lead Site allocations plan.
Yep.
Under Agenda Item Number Four, please can I ask members to declare any discosible pecuniary interests? I'll take silence as none. Under Agenda Item Number Five, apologies have been received from councillor Finnegan.
Thank you very much, Tash. Okay. What, so before I move on to go through the minutes, there's actually a change to our agenda that I want to, to get the agreement of panel. So under Agenda Item Eight, which is the local plan update, there's been quite a lot going on. And one of our running themes actually, isn't it, has been a succession of government consultations on guidance and what have you have been issued. And that's happening all the time at the moment. And it's rather caught up with the work we're doing because we were due to submit a paper to Executive Board, and the next Executive Board. However, at the moment, we've got a few issues. So we'd be in danger of going through the local plan review and submitting a paper to Executive Board that was already had elements of it that were out of date. So what I suggest we do is that we defer this item until the next Development Plan Panel, which will give officers time to assess the guidance that's come in. It particularly does refer to our climate emergency-led local plan review in some detail. So if I ask, Mr Elliot, do you want to add some weight to that, Martin?
Thank you, Chair, yes. So this is just to say that, as members will recall, there were a number of items to be considered as part of the local plan update. And one of the chief items was around zero carbon and standards for new developments within Leeds and the role of the planning system in going further than the standards set by national government. Now, within the papers that are currently part of the agenda, there is no reflection of new requirements that came out on the 10th of February. And those relate to what the government is calling nearly zero energy buildings. And there is a need to really understand what that means and what the implications are for the scope of the local plan update and its intended consultation. Because as members will be aware, we do need to get these plans off on the right foot so that they are de-risked further down the process. And what we wouldn't want to do is go out to consultation with something that wasn't reflecting the latest government guidance. So as, as you say, Chair, an opportunity to consider the implications of the circular letter that was received from the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government is considered necessary so that we can look at these issues in the round at the next meeting.
Yeah, thanks, Martin. I mean, I, from the chair, I strongly suggest we do this. I am absolutely loathe to submit something, as this panel submits something to Executive Board that is already functionally outdated places. We have a lot to do on this panel. What we don't have time is to do things twice, which would be if we spend a long time this afternoon and send officers with lots of work to do, we'd be in danger of having to revisit all of that in whenever our next meeting is, which has clearly escaped me, but Tash should be able to step in and tell me when our next DP meeting is.
Thanks, Chair. So I believe it's the 11th of May at 1.30pm.
Okay, yeah. So we'll be able to pick things up on the one subsequent to that. So I don't have a problem with this as Chair. I strongly suggest we do that. Nice indications from councillors Carter and Campbell. Ah, welcome aboard, councillor Campbell. Thanks for joining us. Councillor Carter, you're first.
Yes, Chair, I agree with you. We'd also look pretty stupid to be submitting something which had completely disregarded guidance, which was imminent. And so, yes, you're right. Let's, let's do the job right and take into account the most current government guidance we have and debate this fully. Interestingly, to our briefing, we did discuss this, this very thing and make the points about precisely what this meant. And as we don't as yet quite know, then it would be very foolish to waste our time and effort to send something in, which then did not respond to the points raised by the government. We, as I say, we just look stupid.
Yep. Yeah, I concur, Andrew. Thanks very much for that. Councillor Campbell.
Yes, Chair, I'm relaxed as well. I think the world seems to be turning slightly in relation to certainly the government's view on new developments. And I suppose in some ways that should be welcomed. And hopefully we can keep, keep their spirits alive in this respect. Can I just say, I, I think, yeah, I'm happy to delay. I think it might be useful if somebody could just produce a sort of sheet of A4 to let us know in relation to the latest government, I suppose, suggestions, what they're thinking about, just to give us some idea where they're going.
Yeah, yeah. No doubt, Martin and Adam can produce that. I have absolutely no doubt. As a sort of a, an update for members, that would be, that would be excellent. Okay, so if we move to defer the item, can I have a happy second? Oh, sorry, Nicole.
Sorry, yeah. Could, could we, could I ask for a formal motion, please, just to defer?
Yeah. Can I have a proposal or a second from that, please? A motion that we defer. Thank you. Thank you, councillor McKenna. And a second. Members need a second. Councillor Brooks, thank you. And then a flood, as always, and then a flood of offers. So councillor Gruen, thank you very much for that. Okay, can I show our hands in favour? See nods, acclamations? Yeah, lovely. Thank you very much. So we've deferred the item. So that moves us on to the minutes. So if you turn to page seven, I'm not going to go through this page by page, but the minutes are pages seven to 12. Has anybody got anything they want to raise from the minutes? And then, then any matters arising from the minutes? I see no indications. Excellent. Can somebody move the minutes as a true record?
Move them, Chair.
Thank you very much. Excellent. See no dissent. Wonderful. And I don't think there's any matters arising either, is there? Looking around at members' faces. Excellent. Okay. In that case, without further ado, if we move to and who's lost their page number? It would be me. If we move to the SAP review, so.
It's Janet, Chair.
It is Janet, and that's you clearly, Martin, as ever read my mind. Either that, or we've been working together for far too long. But yes, Janet, if you could set, step in and bail the chair out as he wrestles with his paper documents, that'd be lovely. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Members will recall the previous report to DPP on the 11th of December, which presented the options for the remittance of the site allocations plan following the outcome of the legal challenge. Informed by an update to the housing land supply, panel were advised that the allocation of the 37 green belt sites affected by the remittance could not be justified for housing allocations for the SAP plan period 2028. Main modifications were therefore proposed for the 37 sites, but none of the sites would be proposed for allocation. The sites would remain as green belts. This is option two of the three reasonable options which were assessed and presented to DPP in December. Following consideration at Executive Board on the 16th of December, the proposed main modifications were subject to public consultation from the 5th of January to the 16th of February. The purpose of the report presented to panel today is to inform members of the representations received to the proposed main modifications and the council's proposals in response. The consultation process was undertaken reflecting the restrictions applied as a result of the COVID pandemic and followed the conditions set out in the government's amended regulations and the council's interim statements of community involvement. Paragraph 3.1 to 3.4 of the report sets out the consultation measures undertaken. An addendum to the report of consultation has been prepared, which is provided at Appendix Three. A total of 441 duly made representations were made from 249 respondents. 382 representations supported the modifications, 49 objected and 10 were neutral. There were three not, three not duly made submissions as they were received after the end of the consultation period. The largest number of representations, that's 284, were made in relation to sites in the HEMCA, the majority of which, 281, supported the proposal to retain the sites as green belts. 76 representations were made in relation to all 37 sites, with 44 supporting the proposed approach, 22 objecting and 10 neutral. The majority of representatives support the council's proposed approach to retain 37 sites as green belt land, which will have, which will have positive environmental benefits, including supporting climate change. The supportive representatives comprise members of the public, community representatives, including a number of neighbourhood forums from the outer areas, as well as a number of local councillors representing the outer wards. The objectors to the council's approach to retain all 37 sites as green belt land were principally representatives from the developers and house builders. Paragraph 3.8, 3.84 sets out the key issues raised by the objectors and the council's response to each in turn. In summary, the headlined issues raised were as follows. The proposed approach doesn't achieve a spatial distribution. Core Strategy Spatial Policy Seven is not delivered. There is an unbalanced housing supply with an overreliance on brownfield sites in the city centre and the inner area. 37 sites should be allocated now, although a number of representatives advocated a more selective approach to meet housing shortfalls in some HMCA's. Concerns were raised about the delivery and viability of the city centre sites and impact on land supply. The effects of COVID have changed priorities for housing and outdoor space. The effect on housing mix, the loss of affordable housing in the outer areas. Some of the sites previously included provision for schools, which would provide space to meet existing needs as well as needs arising from the green belt sites. Comments were also made about the effect on schools provision in the city centre and the inner area. Concerns were raised about the permits of the green belts and the status of safeguarded land. Some considered that the relationship between the remittance process, the SAP review and the local plan update was unclear. Exceptional circumstances for the allocation of 37 sites could be demonstrated when housing distribution, affordable housing, housing mix and schools capacity were taken as a whole. A number of representatives made reference to specific HMCA's or sites, including the Outer North East, the White Rose Rail Station in relation to HG2150, that's the land east of Churwell, and MX238, Barrowby Road, Manston. I don't propose to set out the council's response to the issues raised by these representations, but we'll be happy to respond to any comments members wish to make about this, following this presentation. However, I will refer to Barrowby Road, Manston, which is detailed at paragraph 3.65 to 3.84 of the report. In the adopted SAP, the site was allocated for mixed use for housing and 10 hectares of land for general employment. The landowners of the site, Scarborough Estates, have argued that the site should be retained solely for employment use. Officers have considered the representation in the context of the latest employment land evidence and the effect of HS2 on existing allocated employment land. There is an identified deficiency of 53 hectares of employment land in the Leeds district against the core strategy requirement. A new option four has been assessed to consider the effects of the allocation of the site for employment use, which proposes none of the 37 green belt sites as housing allocations in the SAP and retain six of them as green belts and propose that one site for general employment use referenced EG237, Barrowby Lane, Manston, replaces the original allocation for mixed use, which was MX238. The assessment has included a sustainability appraisal, which identifies a positive impact arising from job creation and access to employment. It has also been considered with regard to the habitat regulations assessment, which is detailed at paragraph 3.89, which requires an update of the HRA addendum, subject to consultation with Natural England. Officers therefore consider that there is merit in allocating all of the sites for employment land to provide 21 hectares. It is considered that the significant deficit in employment land represents exceptional circumstances for the release of the land from the green belt. To address this change, main modification eight will be retained with the effect of deleting the site from policy HG2, as there are no exceptional circumstances to justify releasing any of the site for housing. However, an additional main modification number 39 will be proposed for the site referenced as EG237, Barrowby Lane, Manston, proposing to allocate the whole 21 hectare site for general employment and policy EG2 within the East HMCA. Appendix One to this report provides the revised proposed main modifications with modification 39 listed at page 40, followed by the HMCA plans shown at remittance and post-remittance and the site-specific plans for the EG237, Barrowby Lane, Manston. Other matters to draw to members' attention are that comments were received from a number of the strategy consultees, which is detailed at paragraph 3.85, but have raised no objections to the proposed main modifications. Paragraph 3.93 to 97 of the report details comments made on the sustainability appraisal addendum. 148 representations were made to the SA addendum, a number commented on the options which were subject to SA and the scoring against SA objectives. The SA addendum has been subsequently been revised to include the assessment of option four, including Barrowby Road. So in conclusion, having considered the representations submitted, it is therefore recommended that aside from the additional main modification number 39 for the allocation of Barrowby Lane, Manston for general employment, no changes are necessary to those agreed for consultation by Executive Board on the 16th of December. Panel are therefore requested to consider the recommendations set out at paragraph 2.2 of the report. Thank you, Chair. Councillor Walsh, you're on mute.
A year into this, colleagues, a year, and you'd think honestly, a school for the gifted moment. Anyway, Janet, what we're saying was how comprehensive your report was. Thank you very much for that. It's really useful, especially because we've given, we've given you members, and it's a good aid memoir for, for all of the members of panel. If folks can recall, this is, with the exception of the one change that Janet's just gone through, and this is in accord with what we've discussed previously. So I'm in favour of the proposed change. It seems sensible and pragmatic. I want to open that up to the floor. Councillor Carter.
Over to you. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. And I'm not going to go on at length on this. As you rightly say, we've discussed it over and over again. We shall be voting in favour of the submission to retain the sites in the green belt, as you would expect. However, we will reserve our position on 39. I understand the arguments that have been put forward as regards the employment land entirely. But we will, we will not at this stage support that alteration. We will support, however, the return of all the other sites to the green belt. Just, I want to make the point about the builders' comments. You know, we don't need reminding that the legal challenge brought by the HEMCA Community Group resulted in a High Court judge saying that the exceptional arguments by the council to build on these green belt sites had not been made, which we, of course, said all along. That's the opposition. And for the, for the builders, then, in these brief paragraphs, and I do thank Janice for a very clear, very clear appraisal of the report. To say they're half-baked and half-hearted, the building fraternity's objections to the return of these to the green belt would be, I think, to understate it. The very fact that they then go on to single out certain particular sites, which happen to be the ones where they would probably generate the most value for the, for the speculative house builders, rather gives the game away. They're the first to go to law when a decision goes against them. And it's interesting that they seem to have completely disregarded the fact that a High Court judge has said quite clearly that the exceptional circumstances for the release of these sites from the green belt for building has simply not been made. It's entirely right now, these should be submitted to the Secretary of State for return to the green belt. I think I made our group's position quite clear as regards the voting, so I hope the clerk has made a note of that. And I'll leave it at that, Chair.
Well, there is, there is, there is a value in brevity, isn't there? After all, I would point out, though, the High Court just found the planning inspectors at fault rather than the, that the council itself. But I think we're broadly in accord of the outcome, if perhaps we differ in some detail on the journey, Andrew. I think it would be best to suggest. However, your position is noted. I'm conscious of the way, I'm keenly aware that this panel over the last couple of years has raised the deficit in employment land on numerous occasions, including, I think, myself on a number of occasions. So, and I think it's been raised by members from across, across the council chamber that we have a deficit in employment land. So this goes some way to rectify that. So I think it's, it's a pragmatic move and I will be supporting it from the chair. But obviously, we want to have further question, further debate before we move to the recommendations that Janet's pointed out are on page five of your additional document. And so councillor Campbell, you're next.
Well, just quickly to reiterate a lot of Andrew's points, I don't think, certainly on record, we've always said that we're not sure about whether the green belt sites were needed. We proved right, thanks to HEMCA. And to remove them from the green belt, sorry, from the housing allocation, put them back in green belt, seems sensible to us and we support that. I am, I'm slightly torn on Barrowby Lane because it, I just wonder, because it was in effect lumped in with the, the green belt sites that the inspector, sorry, that the judge in effect referred to, whether this doesn't actually somewhat preclude our ability to take this particular one out of the green belt. I understand there is pressure for employment land. There is significant pressure across all of the city, quite frankly. And so I am sort of half inclined to support this. But wondered perhaps if it might be appropriate to push it towards the end of the plan period with a view to actually producing some solid evidence that it's really needed in that location at that time. Okay, Chair?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. It's an interesting suggestion, to which I will turn to our extremely accomplished officers for commentary on. Because I'm not sure about in terms of phasing with regards to this one site. Janet, Martin, what's the story there?
I think Adam might be better replying.
I raise my hand, sorry.
Sorry, sorry, Adam, I missed that.
No, it's fine. I think, as I think panel will remember, we removed kind of the notion of phasing as it related to housing through the examination. There's nothing within the core strategy, and Paul Bingham will correct me if I'm wrong here, but there's nothing within the core strategy that suggests that there should be a phasing approach to the allocation of employment land. So I don't think there is necessarily a policy hook for us to base such a phasing approach on. I think as well, we recognise that there is more evidence that's going to be required as we, when we submit the information to the inspectors, the inspector rather, in terms of the soundness of this approach, particularly as it relates to the detailed supply evidence that would justify the release of this site. So we're working on that at the moment. The headlines are obviously captured in the report that we have this fifty-three hectare deficiency. And that's on the basis of up-to-date monitoring and the impacts of HS2 and the loss of this site, should it be lost from the plan. So in our view, the justification to have this in the plan as an allocation is justified. In terms of, I think, Council Campbell's comments about whether this is essentially within the purview of the remittal. It's our interpretation of the judgment that it is, but I guess clearly the inspectors will have the right through the examination to question that and to see whether that is or not. But we'll obviously be presenting those up-to-date evidence to justify that position, should it be supported by executive board and full council.
Okay, thanks, Adam. That's really useful clarification. If there's no mechanism, then there's no mechanism for phasing. But Martin, you want to come in?
Yeah, Chair, just to say that page three hundred and ninety-six, which is a long way down the paper, as I admit, but this is a background paper which supports the submission material to the inspector. And there is a section there, section thirteen, which goes through the justification for this site. And importantly, it distinguishes this site from the other thirty-six. So officers have considered very seriously that this does not present a risk to the position which was agreed by this panel and executive board in terms of the other thirty-six sites, and it is key distinguishable in thirteen point two is the power that sets out sort of what Adam's just said, really, so that the inspector's very clear as to what the council's position is on that.
Okay, yeah. If colleagues could cast an eye on three nine six, section thirteen, thirteen point two, I mean, on that basis, I'm certainly content we accept the proposals. Is any while people are sort of doing that, I'll fill two minutes of dead air while people refresh that paragraph. But, I mean, if members are content with that, then we could move to just look at the proposals that we section two on page, a mere page five of the main report. I'm sorry, the additional item report, which we've we need to, we've noted the report, we've examined the report, debated the report, we need to recommend to executive board that we accept the report and all members are in favour of the removal of sites. Council Carter wants to reserve the Conservative Group's permission on the development land. Council Campbell is somewhat torn. So while Colin is assessing that, Nicole, you want to come in?
Yes, just given the specific comments of members, can we move the motion to of the recommendations or an amended one, so that those members that are not fully happy can either abstain or vote against the motion?
Yes, I think, yes, entirely sensible. So can I have someone to move the motion as set out?
I'll move the recommendation on page five. Sorry, sorry, Chair.
Council Carter.
That doesn't satisfy what I said. We are voting in favour of the recommendations where they apply to returning sites to the green belt. We are abstaining only, only on the one area. I want to make that crystal clear, so there is no doubt at all.
Okay, however, that does present a problem in terms of the recommendations as set out don't quite facilitate that. So I have a number of hands indicated. So Council Campbell was first, then councillor Ritchie, then councillor Walker, Nicola Walker. Colin?
Can I suggest then to help both Andrew and myself that we propose that we could have an amendment which basically says we accept the removal of all the green belt sites and vote on, except, what's it, thirty-nine Barrowby Lane, and we could vote on the two separately. And then there could be another proposal which is in fact
Sensible.
Included.
And I'll move that, Colin, if you'll second it.
Okay.
Right, now, let me untangle this. I've had a proposal on the second and also a proposal from councillor McKenna. And then councillor Ritchie's indicated he wants to speak. So let's take the councillor Ritchie's elected member next, and then Ms Walker's from legal.
Yeah, thanks. It were a similar vein, I think, to councillor Campbell, really. We're going to suggest that we have split it and have like one to thirty-eight as a motion and then take thirty-nine as a motion in its own right, because that's the main change, isn't it? To this from the last paper, so it's similarised to councillor Campbell, I suppose. But of course, you've got the issue where councillor McKenna's already moved that motion, hasn't he? But I'll leave you to sort that out while your internet's still on.
Well, I thank you, councillor Ritchie. That's most kind of you. Hang on, let me just pull the power off. Oh, I've gone. Right, so, however, councillor McKenna, we didn't have a second as it happens because things moved too quickly. So I do have a proposal in a second.
I'll second, Chair.
Yeah, but now, but that's come after councillor, thank you very much councillor Brooks, but that's come after the proposal in the second for the amended motion that councillors Campbell and Carter have come up with. So before we do
I'm, Chair, sorry, I did indicate I did indicate at the time.
Oh, I didn't say I really, sorry.
Chair.
However.
Chair, my motion did come first, but if it resolves the issue, I'm quite happy to go along with councillor Campbell's suggestion. I'm in favour of the resolution as it stands, but Colin's resolution will reflect what I can vote for and allows councillor Carter and Campbell to do what they wish in the circumstances. If that's okay with our legal representative, I'm quite happy to do that.
Well, this is an opportune moment to bring Nicole in.
Thanks, Chair. So the recommendations are, as written, are for all the main modifications to be to be proposed to executive board for approval. So there's two things that we could do. We could either move the recommendations as councillor McKenna had, I appreciate that wasn't seconded, and make very clear in the minutes, in any event of this meeting, the specific views of councillor Campbell and councillor Carter. But then, but move as set out in the report or take the alternative motion, which is, would need to read that that development plans panel was proposing that executive board approve the recommendations of the first lot of main modifications, but not necessarily in relation to the Barrowby Lane site.
Correct.
Now, if that's what the full motion is, so it's not too, it's amended recommendation. So what panel would be being asked to do is vote on whether they were happy not to recommend the Barrowby Lane site.
We would.
You amend and the motion is amend and the recommendation, and so members would need to vote on that. So if those members, such as councillor McKenna, who has indicated that he is happy with the recommendations as proposed, he would not be voting in favour of that unless he changes his mind in the interim, because it is an amended recommendation which says yes to the keep the housing sites in the green belt and no to allocate the employment site.
Okay.
So that motion's been moved and seconded now. So that's the one that people need to take the vote on unless councillor Campbell and councillor Carter want to withdraw that motion and go with the other option.
Colleagues, dare I suggest we're complicating a rather simple process here? It seems to be the case, right, that all the members on this panel want to vote to remove the all but one of the sites from the green belt, right? Then I suggest all but three members of this panel and one undecided want to have the MX two thirty-eight as an employment site rather than removing the green belt, right? And then councillor Campbell's yet to make up his mind. I'm not being sarcastic, Colin, I think that's your position. Sorry, I have a tone in my voice, I appreciate that. So, so there doesn't seem much value in having a motion that causes confusion on this when it seems to be quite simple. So I've got councillor Campbell and councillor Ritchie with their hands up. So councillor Campbell first?
I'm just trying to help you out, Chair. Why don't we just have two? In the end, panel decides what it's going to resolve, doesn't it?
It does.
And therefore, why don't we just have two resolutions?
Oh, I live in hope.
Resolutions, one of which effectively is the officer's recommendation insofar as it refers to one to thirty-eight, I think it is. And then a separate resolution which refers, which I'm assuming that somebody on your side will propose, which include which specifically referred to Barrowby Lane.
Yep.
At which point councillor Carter and anybody else and ourselves could either vote for, against or abstain. So it's actually two resolutions, you follow what I'm saying? So I think
And that makes it dead simple.
I think councillor, from my point of view, I'm quite happy to propose that we accept effectively the officer's wording for sites one to thirty-eight.
I did think initially that that was what yourself and councillor Carter had proposed, to be honest. However,
I thought that's what I proposed, but you got a bit confused when Nicola gave us something like that.
Chair, sorry, if I may, you can't have two resolutions on one item of business. So that's why you would need to amend the recommendation so that you got that outcome. Or alternatively, you keep the recommendation and members who want to vote abstain from the part that they don't that would abstain from the whole vote or vote against the whole recommendation. But we could note in the minutes that that actually only related to that one main modification. So everyone was very clear about what the positions of, say, councillor Carter or councillor Campbell were.
Yes, okay. That is now clear in my mind. Okay. Councillor Ritchie.
Well, yeah. I'll reiterate the point that I made five minutes ago, which councillor Campbell has effectively just repeated. So I don't know if no one was listening to me or what, because I clearly said two resolutions. However, since then, Nicole has kindly explained why we can't do that. So personally, I think we should go to the original motion, vote on that. And then the minutes can reflect councillor Campbell's, certainly councillor Carter's comments and anybody else.
Yeah.
Councillor Campbell's as well, because I think it's important. I support modification thirty-nine and I want that to be reflected. I'm not sure that the amendment clearly reflected that. So that's my position. But if we want to play it back, I'm pretty certain I did suggest two separate resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you to councillor Ritchie. That's helpful. I've got councillor Anderson.
Well, I have
Oh, no, sorry, councillor Carter's got his I do apologise by where you've popped up. You're all moving around. Councillor Andrew Carter.
Yes, Chair. I mean, councillor Ritchie is absolutely right what he suggested, what I think was extremely sensible. And I have to say, I'm going to challenge Nicole's judgment here. I cannot believe that a committee of councillors cannot alter officer recommendations as they wish. It does not hold water. And therefore, to say that we want to amend the recommendations, so we vote for or against one to thirty-eight, and then a separate vote on thirty-nine, which gives those in favour and those against the opportunity of voting. It just, well, I've never heard a ruling like that, that we can't amend an officer recommendation as we see fit.
Yeah.
Chair.
Yeah, councillor, Nicole, come in.
Sorry, just to clarify, I didn't say, just to clarify for members' understanding, I'm not suggesting that you can't amend an officer recommendation. Of course you can. That can be done at all times, as often done at plans panels. What I'm saying is, it would need to be moved as one recommendation. So you would be amending the recommendation, but it's one motion as to what you wanted to say. So your recommendation, sorry, your motion councillor Carter, which has been seconded, so unless it's withdrawn, would need to be voted on, is that that recommendation is amended to read panel, so the vote would be panel agrees with the first main modifications, but does not agree in relation to the Barrowby Lane modification. That is what members will need to vote on unless that amendment is withdrawn. So you have amended the recommendation. That's entirely, like you say, within your gift to do so. It doesn't end up with two resolutions. It ends up with one resolution. But members need to be clear about what that amended recommendation is, and that is that you vote not to support the employment site.
Right. Gosh, we have complicated something rather easy, haven't we? Okay, so unless that unless that motion's withdrawn, councillor Campbell, then we're going to have to take a vote on that.
Oh, Chair, I'm I'm getting like Andrew. I'm not convinced on this because we appear to be, in effect, constraining what members can do. So if the motion reads, in effect, we accept one to thirty-eight, but not thirty-nine, then we're being pushed into a position where either you vote for or against one to thirty-eight. And as I say, it just seems such a simple We all think that, don't we? It really seems very simple. You know, with two recommendations, we'd have been quite happy with this. And I cannot understand why we cannot do that. I'm sorry. We, if you think about the budget debate last week, where on thirty-nine occasions, I voted on effectively a split recommendation in relation to the budget. You may have lost interest and the will to live at that point, but certainly, we appear to be able to split up budget resolutions, for example, on full council, to their component parts. Why can't we do that? I just don't understand that. We've been pushed into it. Andrew and I have been pushed in a direction we don't really want to go.
Exactly right.
Yeah, okay. I have a lot of sympathy with that, Colin, I really do. I've got two more members indicating they're wanting to speak. So councillor Collins, then councillor Grun.
Thank you Chair, I'm probably going to make things more complicated, but.
Oh, go on please.
Yeah, looking at the late item document where the recommendations are, it says and recommends to council that it, A approves the proposed thirty nine main modifications to the remit part of the site. Okay, so what happens to the original recommendation that was in the main document?
Well, the.
We just ignore that?
Well, the devoted on recommendations become the recommendations, don't they? That's, if whatever becomes, whatever passes the panel's vote becomes the amended recommendation surely, I think.
In fact, we've actually got two recommendations though, haven't we? We've got one from the original document and we've got one from the late items document. And I thought I'd make it more complicated, sorry.
You, you have, so, okay. And I thought this would be a quiet afternoon in the office, however. I'm going to bring in councillor Grun, then I want to kind of sum up as to where I think we are.
Sorry, I think at this stage, I'm not going to add very much more, but as I thought, ten minutes ago, I thought I fully understood what was being suggested. Nicole, where you, did you say at one point that you can't have two resolutions where one existed before?
Chair, I think, I think it's about, it's about recommendations, motions and resolutions. So the resolution is the vote on the motion, isn't it? But the motion doesn't have to fully reflect a recommendation, because as councillor Carter points out, you can, members can move an amended recommendation. That recommendation is there from officers as a starting point, which members may choose to move as a whole or move as amended. So councillor Carter has moved an amended recommendation, which is entirely acceptable. But, but members need to fully understand what they are then voting on, and that is that amendment. The only other matter, the only other way I could suggest is if we, is if a motion is moved for members to vote on that site of the employment site. And if that is carried, that becomes part of the substantive motion. If it's not carried, then you can move, move a further motion to accept the recommendations as written. But in any circumstances, the minutes can still fully reflect the views of councillor Carter and councillor Campbell.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to prolong the agony with this, but that just confuses matters even more. Would it be easier if somebody was to move a straightforward resolution that we adopt the recommendations between one and thirty eight? And then somebody, and so that becomes a matter for voting. All those in favour then vote in favour of it, which is probably all of us. And then we vote on thirty nine, in which case those in favour of thirty nine can vote in favour, which councillor Ritchie wanted it to be clear he wanted to do, and I agree with him. And those of us who want to vote against or abstain on thirty nine can do so. It's absolutely crystal clear then who has voted for what. And with your respect Nicole, you're making it more confused as you go on.
Okay folks, right. I think from councillors Ritchie and Carter that the clearest way possible of going forward. So and I can't, I honestly genuinely can't see how we can't do that. It's a set of recommendations, it's a proposal from members, it, to me as Chair, it seems perfectly reasonable. It's been suggested now by members from, if you like, both sides of the aisle, so to speak. I can't see anything wrong with that. So if a member was to move that, I suggest councillor Collins, is that a historical hand or is that a new hand?
Yes, sorry Chair.
Thanks. Councillor Grun, same to you, is that an older hand or a new hand?
It's a new one, because I want to propose that we vote on motions one to thirty eight.
Hallelujah, praise be, can someone second that please?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Carter, good to see you partisan cooperation in the DPP. And then can someone propose that we vote separately on thirty nine? Team?
Yeah, I'll move that. We have to formally withdraw the councillor Campbell's motion, I think that's still on the table.
We do, I'm just, I'm just coming to that. If somebody could just second councillor Ritchie's proposal, and then if I could go to councillor Campbell to, hopefully that he suggested withdrawals his original motion.
I can dive in at this point, Chair, I'll second councillor Ritchie and I will withdraw my amendment.
Hallelujah!
Wow, well, well folks, I'm just glad yet once again that we could demonstrate to the people of Leeds live on YouTube that we are not for nothing but a details council. Thank you very much, and the amount of weight and import we put to these things is incredible. And I kind of think that's a good thing by and large, I really do. So the first resolution was, the first motion rather was, that we vote in on items one to thirty eight, which is the sites to be removed from the green belt. Now, in terms of voting, I have to go through you all one by one, I think. Nicole is nodding. So bear with me while I bring up my highly exciting alphabetical list. Are we all clear on what we're voting for? Yeah, we are, good. Councillor Anderson?
I'm in favour of the first part.
Just the first part now?
No, 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 no.
No, just the first bit Barry.
Just the first bit?
Yeah.
I'm in favour.
This is the removal of one to thirty eight, yeah, and returning to the green belt, good. Councillor Brooks?
In favour Chair.
Thank you, councillor Campbell?
Support Chair.
Councillor Carter?
In favour.
Councillor Collins?
In favour Chair.
Councillor Grun? Councillor Grun?
In favour.
Thank you, councillor Hayden?
In favour.
Thank you, councillor McKenna?
In favour Chair.
Councillor Ritchie?
In favour as well for the full house.
Oh, woo hoo! Right, so then the second motion is the vote on site thirty nine, which is the site to retain as mixed employment, which we've discussed at length, so we're going to vote on that. So councillor Anderson?
Abstain.
Councillor Brooks?
I don't fully understand what, what this part is Chair. Could you, could you reiterate what, what we're voting on? Is it to, is it to retain it or to get rid of it?
This is to retain site MX two thirty eight, which is, which is item thirty nine in the additional recommendations. Rather than returning to green belt to have it as a mixed use employment site, given the.
Yeah, about in favour retaining it then, thank you.
Lovely, thank you. Councillor Campbell?
Abstain.
Councillor Carter?
Abstain.
Councillor Collins?
Abstain.
Councillor Grun?
In favour.
Councillor Hayden?
In favour.
Councillor McKenna?
In favour Chair, which means I'm in favour of the resolution as written on my papers.
Councillor Ritchie, thank you Jim, councillor Ritchie.
In favour as well.
And I'm in favour from the Chair as well. Well, we got there in the end. So is that clear to officers what we've just agreed? And how recommendations need to be amended? Good? I'm seeing no dissent, excellent. I think that's everything on this item, I'm looking to Nicole, she's not shaking her head vigorously, good, excellent, right. Thank you very much for that colleagues, we got there in the end. We are, as I've said before, on many occasions, a details council. So if you could turn to our next item, which as we're not doing the local plan review for obviously sensible reasons, we're going straight over to it's item nine and it's page one four five and the initial document. And so this is the government consultation, so changes to the NPPF framework and the National Model Design Code. So eyes down for a vigorous debate on what on earth beauty means. Over to officers.
Thank you Chair, just to make a point, just to clarify that this is a joint report with my colleague Caroline Harris, who is on the, who is on the, on the call and will be covering parts of, parts of the consultation too. So this consultation is by central government and is proposing to make changes to the NPPF and the National Model Design Code, I've got that in the right order, and the pilot code that goes with it. Just to put some context for you, this follows on from the Building Better, Building Beautiful Commission Living with Beauty Report, which emphasises asking for beauty and refusing ugliness with a number of other recommendations. But those are the key points in the context of this consultation. And it's also with the government's Planning White Paper Consultation, which is now closed on planning for the future, which was presented to Development Plans Panel on the thirteenth of October twenty twenty, and they said twenty one then, apologies. The presentation, the present consultation covers two areas here today, seeking views on changes to the NPPF and seeking views on the draft National Model Design Code, which also includes seeking expressions of interest for a pilot scheme, which Caroline will add more to. With regard to the NPPF, it is important to note that this is not a full review of the NPPF and possibly a missed opportunity and does not reflect the proposals for the full development planning reform. So we've picked out, because there are five key areas to be looked at, achieving well-designed places, achieving sustainable development, climate change, flood risk management and the use of Article Four Directions. I refer you to paragraph three point five of the report, achieving well-designed places. There is increased emphasis on good design and quality of places created. The text deletes the word development and replaces this with places more linking to place making, which we consider to be a positive way forward. Along with this, there is a requirement for local planning authorities to prepare design codes in line with the National Model Design Guidance and Code, which then links in with the white paper proposals about fronting up, having design codes and with much more community engagement in the plan making, plan making process, and if not as supplementary planning documents, which in turn gives more weight with the emphasis of effective community and gives effective, and the emphasis on effective community engagement. Clarity is provided that the form is not well designed and should be refused, especially when it does not reflect the national or local design codes, and I think this is a positive thing. The changes also proposed with reference to the role of neighbourhood planning groups, not just neighbourhood planning areas and in develop, and this is all key in developing local design guidance. Changes also emphasise on the importance of good design as are supported, but in the amended text, the words beauty and beautiful have been inserted, which raises concerns regarding their objectivity, meaning different things to different people and whether or not it can cause more work than not. And that great emphasis should be placed on making, on making this more essential in achieving well-placed designs. In terms of, in paragraph three point eight on which achieving sustainable development. The key change in the wording of presumption in favour of sustainable development has made reference to the importance of infrastructure and climate change, climate change, which is fully supported. And the word, and the actual paragraph in the NPPF states it now includes a requirement that all plans should promote a sustainable pattern of development that seeks to meet the development needs of their area, align growth and infrastructure, improve the environment, mitigate climate change brackets including by making effective use of land in urban areas and adapt to its effects. This gives much more significant weight to sustainability and climate change through the planning process. However, it's thought this could be considered that this could be made much stronger and clearer by using the words deliver or ensure sustainable development. And rather than seeking to mitigate, it should be maximised to address climate change issues. It's also considered that it's not just the pattern of developments, but the form of developments that goes hand in hand and thus encourages place making. In paragraph three point ten is climate change. As referred in our response to the planning white paper, the seventeen global goals for sustainable development have now been incorporated into the text. However, it's considered that the review changes have missed a significant opportunity in not updating the climate change section fully, for example, with regard to zero carbon homes. In regard to paragraph three eleven flood risk management, the text now recognises sequential tests taken to count all sources of flood risk and that the local planning authority apply natural flooding management techniques to reduce causes and impacts of flooding. Do an integrated approach, this is a positive thing, but we think that might create some technicalities and sharing of information with other stakeholders, which is what we need further clarification on. The flood risk vulnerability classification now forms part of the NPPF, not as it was in the NPPG, so it gives it significantly more weight here. The intention of giving more weight is to be noted with the flood risk is fully supported, but there are considered to be some practical difficulties and further guidance and clarity is required, for example, the relative preference between sites with surface water flooding versus sites with the groundwater flooding. It's also added that buildings, it's required that buildings are brought back into use with minimal refurbishment and should be resilient, resistant and resilient, but this depends on the quality of materials, how we take that forward, and that should be fundamentally part of the planning process and we assume we're involved in. In paragraph three point thirteen, Article Four Directions, there is a significant additional text, additional text curbing the use of Article Fours. And they've given us two options to look at. And one is that we should stick such directions for change of use to residential, residential situations where there is essential to avoid wholly unacceptable adverse impacts or be limited to situations where this is necessary in order to protect an interest of national significance. In all cases, additional texts is also proposed that would limit Article Fours to the smallest geographical area possible. This, I'm sure, as you were, is raising significant concerns as Leeds is very active in using Article Fours, especially with regard to change of use of dwellings to housing of multiple occupation. The further curbing raises potential implications, for example, on our town and local centres if we are able to manage conversions to residential, which are now allowed under the new government permitted development rights. It is vital that the LPAs have the, have the control locally on planning issues through the, through the use of Article Fours. Right, I will now hand over to my colleague Caroline Harris, who will go through the draft National Model Design Code and the potential pilot scheme, thank you.
Thank you Sarah, so yes, as Sarah's outlined, alongside the changes to the National Planning Policy Framework, there's also a draft National Model Design Code which has been put out to consultation. And this provides national guidance on how to prepare design codes and guidance, rather than it being national policy. And it really sort of outlines what, what design guidance should cover and what issues should be considered, and also how consultation should be taken as part of that process of preparing design guidance. And overall, I think the, the initial officer view of, of the document is that it's positive. I mean, much of it is familiar territory in Leeds. As, as your members will be aware, we've got a range of design guidance documents in place, from the sort of citywide Neighbourhoods for Living, which covers residential development to more sort of topic specific guidance, such as that on tall buildings. And we also have a number of site specific guidance or master plans being prepared. So it's not, it's not new to Leeds to have good design guidance in place. And I think much of what it's saying really sort of re-emphasises the approach that we have taken and we would continue to take in the future, which, which is positive, particularly sort of giving weight to that in the decision-making process. I think there are some areas though where we sort of consider that it could be strengthened. I think particularly what it suggests is that you would take a sort of an area typology based approach to preparing design guidance, which would look at inner city suburbs, for example, and prepare design and guidance for those. But clearly in a diverse urban area such as Leeds, an inner city area type covers a wide variety of areas, and I think there needs to be a greater recognition of that. And actually, what, what level is it most appropriate to have, have guidance and design codes? I think also there's no section within the draft model design code on, on climate change, which I think we feel is a real missed opportunity and something which should be brought into greater focus at the sort of national level through this design guidance. Similarly, also some matters where, shh darling, yeah, yes, sorry about that. Similarly, there's also, shh, I'm really sorry, shh. There's also some instances where, sorry, I've got two, two children, yes, I can see, thank you. There's also some instances where it shows designs which we wouldn't be appropriate in, or we wouldn't necessarily promote in Leeds. And there's also some instances where it suggests that some elements wouldn't be essential as design guidance, which I think we'd consider were sort of very important and we'd look to consider them and think they should be, are really very important issues to address. Sorry, I've completely lost my train of thought here, but I think also it's, I think it's also very. It it's also very important to sort of make the point, I think, in our response back to government, that whilst having good design guidance, it is, it's very important, it's not. Alone, it's not going to solve all the issues that the challenges that we've we do face when trying to achieve good design on sites. And issues such as viability, for example, and that sort of whole place approach is really needed to planning, design, delivery and funding, it all needs to be considered together. I- in the round. Now, as part of the, or alongside the consultation, the government's invited expressions of interest from local planning authorities who are interested in testing. Elements of the National Model Design Code. And we'd, we have put a bid into this process, they're offering fifty thousand pounds to support us to um. You know, have a have a go, sort of test, testing out different parts of the um of of the approach that it suggests. And our bid focuses on looking at that sort of area-type approach and how that works in this sort of diverse city such as Leeds and how you involve. Communities in in that process, and we had been. Uh advised that successful bids would be um announced on yesterday on Monday, but due to the. High levels of interest, we've now been told that that's been pushed back till next week, unfortunately, whilst in the papers, we're hoping that we'll be able to provide you an update at this session. And we're we're not able to do so today, but obviously we will let you know as soon as we have an outcome. I think that's everything.
Thanks Caroline, thanks Sarah. Do you have anything else to add, Sarah?
I do, it's not very good at un-meeting, uh just to sort of, uh thanks Caroline, just to conclude. Um that there are, there is general support for the proposed changes in the MPPF, and we think it has taken on board um some of the. Some of the the response that we provided in October, however, we do feel that it's a missed opportunity. Not just to review the whole document, because there are links to other sections, like for example regarding car parking and the dominance of that and things like that. Uh specifically with climate change, obviously we raised concern about the Article Four, the word I didn't get out was our ability to uh to to be able to control this to our local. Local issues, um but I think the key part is also that seeks the strengthening of the words and clarity on wording. Uh and putting more emphasis on to do, not just to, you know, wishing in a way. Um so we hope, th- those are the key points that hopefully we've picked up for you in the report. Um the next steps obviously following today, uh taking on board your responses and comment, the detailed response will be provided. To the executive member for climate change, transport and sustainable development, because the final comments, formal comments is Saturday, the twenty seventh of March. Twenty twenty one. That's it, Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah Caroline. councillor Hayden is getting a crash course in the time scales. That um McLog subjectives to at all times, so just, I've got loads of members wanting to speak, I'll bring you all in, I just want to say it for myself, yeah. Climate, 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 it is so absent from this, um and there's so much wiggle room, and if you couple this with the. The the just recent issued uh letter regarding almost climate, almost carbon neutral homes, it really, really does sell. Set a really large alarm bells ringing with myself, I can't help but think that almost zero carbon was a phrase that. Somebody dreamt up, uh a minister or an advisor dreamt up just after Persimian had got off the phone to them in their latest lobbying exercise. I'm really concerned about that. It behooves me to say at the moment that stuff we're building, stuff that is being built across the country at the moment. And it's gonna need retrofitting really quickly to make it carbon, to make it zero carbon. Which so it, and then MPPF is a really fairly quick and easy way, a change in government policy that doesn't need. Um a whole lot of rigmarole in in terms of parliament, and we're going through this incredibly rigorous and and. Very detailed local plan review, well, it could be greatly aided by the government changing the MPPF, which I say can do really easily. So for myself, uh very much climate, 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 now, and obviously being a heading in high power councillor, I am concerned about the. Um the curtailing and muzzling somewhat of of Article Four Directions, um so those few comments from myself. I got, it was councillor Hayden. Um then councillor Brooks, then councillor Anderson, then councillor Ritchie, and then councillor McKenna. So councillor Hayden, then councillor Brooks.
Um I just want to say um to Caroline, how beautifully you handled. What is becoming um a kind of like uh occupational hazard, and I would have completely. I would not have been able to articulate all that you did whilst dealing with um of obviously a small childhood, you know, so. Well done, and um I feel your pain, I was chairing a meeting my last West Yorkshire jost last week. When my son was having a meltdown over his maths, so. It's um, it's, you know, it's the world we live in, and I just wanted to say how brilliant you did, so thank you very much.
Uh next up councillor Brooks.
Cheers, Chair, um. Uh I'm afraid you're gonna have to bear with me, because this is my first meeting, uh and I'm trying, but if there's a load of stuff that's already been. Um covered in other meetings, then please just let me know, um so. I mean, this, there's this, this load of stuff about beauty, I mean, art students up and down the country debate what beauty is, like. Probably every day with glass of wine in hand, um it's it's something that is completely impossible to pin down. So, I mean, from from what I'm getting from the papers, um it seems that what we're trying to do is pin it down as being design is beauty. Which um I think, I think is a lot more tangible and a lot more helpful, so I'm really in in favour of. Um like, like you, Chair, I've got, I've got some concerns around the Article Four Directions, and I'd like to put that sort of on. On record, um for similar, similar reasons, uh I think that. HMOs are wonderful things for low-cost housing, but when there are. A high cons- concentration in an area like in um my ward and I know your ward. Um it can really have a really adverse impact, and so that's very, very concerning to me, um. With regards to this um community engagement, the mention of community engagement. Um what sort of shape would that take? I know, I know you mentioned that there's gonna be fifty thousand pounds potentially to. To develop that, um and how would that then tie in with neighbourhood plans as well, because obviously. A lot of our residents across the city have put a lot of time and effort into developing neighbourhood plans, and I'd I'd just like to see how all that can. Can tie together. Thank you.
Yep, thanks for that, um officers, regarding councillor Brooks's comments, Caroline?
Yeah, yeah, I think um neighbourhood planning fits in really well into the sort of the the sort of the the design coding and design guidance side of things, I think the. When you look at the document, it sort of sets out the importance of having sort of early-stage consultation on. Sort of ideas and principles at the outset, and then sort of going back out to consultation on the sort of the details and really sort of ensuring that. Local people are sort of signed up and really inputting into what what they want to see in their local areas, and I think. It 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 fits in well with the sort of the neighbourhood planning agenda, and I think it's certainly something which neighbourhood planning groups could well get engaged with in the future, I think. And you'll possibly be aware that we've already got sort of guidance um for neighbourhood plans on how they can sort of. Look at design through the neighbourhood planning process, because I think it's something that nearly all, I think, well, in fact, all of the neighbourhood planning groups are something which that which they're interested in, but they have. Perhaps found in the past, it's difficult to. Um difficult to know exactly what what to do, so I think this is certainly something which they could become involved in. And in terms of the the funding for the expression of interest bid, I think, again, it's it's not. The 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 expression of in the sort of bidding process, it was very quite unclear um exactly what government were looking for, you know, there's an offer of money and a. A request for offers to test the uh design code, but not necessarily clarity on exactly what they're wanting. Um people to look at or to do, um but I suspect if we are successful in the bidding process, you know. Those sort of conversations will continue and we'll get more sort of clarity around exactly what's what they're wanting us to do and how we'd go about doing that and using the funding to do it.
I mean, that's good to know, Caroline, as as I always said, Leeds should be involved in all of these processes as many as we can be, because I think our voices are useful on tap, you know. A rough, tough, terrific northern city with many admirable qualities, I think we should be getting involved in all these kind of consultations. I've got councillor Anderson next.
Just a couple of, well, more than a couple. Um I have concerns at the way we are going to be responding to the NPPF changes. I personally would have liked to have seen this done via the way that we've done it in the past on Development Plans Panel, by having a workshop. To look at in detail all of these proposals. Uh I noticed that there's been no uh appending of the actual government document to our papers today. Nor is there any reference at the back of the papers where not, where you would normally put. A link to get access to those particular things, where it says at the bottom, background papers on most things, it's not there either, so. We can't do much research, I personally would prefer that we looked. At a workshop to look at our methodology, because there's a number of things, climate change and the Article Four. Jumped to mind straight away, where I think we need a detailed debate, rather than having it today, when we're uh not quite sure as to what's happening. In terms of the design, what I'm not clear about is what unit. Uh they're talking about that's being done at, is it city level only? Is it HMCA level? Is it community committee level? Is it at neighbourhood plan group area, having different ones, so you could end up with, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty different design codes. All maybe with a central theme going through the middle of it, but then because one. Design does not suit another part of the city, anybody who sits in a plans panel knows. That when you're trying to design things out, there are certain things that work brilliantly in some parts of the city, but for many reasons. Wouldn't work in other parts of the city, so how are we going to deal with the breakdown of that? The next one as well, in terms of the viability. A lot of times, again, on plans panels, we get the developers come back to and say, sorry, it's not viable. We can't do it to your specification, we can't do it the way you want, and they make the case, the district valuer comes along. We don't always at plans panel get the full details behind it, we get a summary usually. So some of us who do have a knowledge of finance cannot then probe more fully where some of the information's coming from. So if we do end up with design codes, what's the chances of a developer arguing against it on viability terms? And the final thing, which has already been covered in terms of a pilot approach, that it would all depend on where you see the units coming from. Is it citywide or is it some other broken-down unit uh for there, because you could then pilot it in. If you were going into micro areas, you could pilot in maybe two or three different areas to see what the impact is. And that way we would get a better feel for the couns- from the councillor's perspective to answer this back. And so I would like, so to summarise, I would like the workshop, and I would like to know what the unit is going to be, and I would like to know about the viability concerns.
And thanks Barry, I mean, in in terms of workshops, what's what's the response timeline on this, Caroline, Sarah?
Chair, if I if I could just 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 come in on that, so so it's um in the March um for this one. Um and 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 I think, I I just wants to give you a bit of context really to this, because I think it's important that panel. Understand um what this this consultation represents really, because it's a bit of a hybrid. And it's also, without being um, it 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 appears quite piecemeal, and and if I would say ad hoc. And and the reasons for that are that it purports to to report back on the Building Better, Building Beautiful Commission findings. Which it does through some changes to the MPPF and with the model code. But it also drifts into some of the things that were raised within the planning white paper, now, we don't have an understanding. Of whether what it's saying is its only change arising from the white paper, or whether there's gonna be more change coming. So I think possibly the biggest um concern that we could express on this is that it does appear that it is quite ad hoc, so what we're not seeing is the bigger picture. We're not seeing what the government thinks the purpose of planning should be post its extensive planning white paper consultation. What we are seeing is a focus on some updates as a result of Building Better, Building Beautiful, along with some Article Four changes, et cetera. So that that does put us in a bit of a, we are a bit concerned that if this is the the tenor. Of the sort of response that's gonna come out with quite tight timeframes. We're we're not gonna be able to get that proper debate that councillor Anderson quite rightly says we should have, and I and I think. We we would aim and we would, we would certainly aim to have that debate, and and I would just say to councillor Anderson, this isn't the final draft of our response. Um this is, I think, as uh as as Para um three point two six sets out. That after DPP, a detailed response will be drafted, which um it's proposed will be uh in consultation with the executive member. Before going to um MHCLG, so certainly taking on board the points raised by panel today. Um but I just wanted to to make that that point, and 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 finally, on the the viability point, and I think. Coupled with the sort of slight frustration that the government haven't really captured. Everything that that they should have from the white paper, we're still not really sure what. What level good design sits at in terms of all of those wider planning considerations that need to be taken into account. This certainly does more to promote design within the MPPF. But we still have to balance design against everything else that the MPPF is seeking to provide. It certainly doesn't provide, elevate it above the status at which it was held previously. And and members will recall that, and and as Sarah and Caroline said, we we have quite a lot of design guidance within the city. One of the things that precluded us from really using that in force was not having a five-year housing land supply and seeing. Some of those policies being penalised, and I think councillor Anderson's point about viability is a point well made. Because what the MPPF doesn't do is make an update to say. That that good design can be delivered in viable means and should be ensured. Um alongside viability considerations, so that, for example, good design is 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 included from the very beginning. So that when developers purchase the land, they they've already factored in excellent design and beauty in into those, it doesn't say that. Um what 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 we have is, we have this retained balance, so some good things in this. Uh and and some heartening things about sustainable development design, et cetera, but but not quite within what. What we expect or or what what the 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 future planning system might look like, um which which is still to come.
Yeah, I I I agree with mine, I I share all those concerns, and ultimately this needs, oh well. This would ultimately really rather need to be tied up in the new Town and Country Planning Act in some form, and to bring it all together. Um however, I don't think that's on the cards anytime soon, um okay, so thanks, so councillor. Ritchie, and then, I mean, Mr Feeny wants to come in, but I want to let a few other fellow elected members in first, David, so we've got councillor Ritchie and then councillor McKenna.
Thanks, Chair, thank you, Chair, I just wanna concentrate on on Article Four, and um I'm glad to see that there are concerns. Um as you know, I've raised the fact that we actually need to review Article Four and strengthen it, because. We're behind the curve as the market's shifting, um and the developers, many are from London, it it appears. Are moving out into different areas such as Bramley, and I'm sure other areas, I know Armley have had a few, I don't know the extent of Article Four protection in Armley. But they're certainly moving it, the other suburbs out from the traditional areas, so we need to strengthen that. And I know it's been programmed in and and other priorities have got in its way, but the question I've got is, if this came in. Would it be be applied going forwards, i.e. the Article Four protection that we've got in now would remain, or would. You know, be all torn up and start again, basically, because. If it's the latter, or the former, which I forget which way I put them in actually, but the one where we keep what we've got. That tells me we need to crack on with the review of Article Four to get some control. That um Sarah spoke so clearly about in these in these areas, because these developers. Have no consideration whatsoever about the impact that these developments have on on our often narrow. Streets with limited parking and the other uh associated behaviours that can be uh come along with these developments. And I'll just add my thanks to the officers for their presentation and the paper. But that's it from me. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Richie. I agree with all of that. Yeah. It's a big concern in my patch as well. Just, so you've captured those comments on Article Four. A thing that just leap out is they want to confine them to the narrowest possible areas. And that's a big sort of huge concern, isn't it? I mean, I think using, if you like, area-based deterrent, area-based policy can head off problems before they become really significant problems, head them off at the past, to use a crap-hacking phrase, you know what I mean? And I think we've seen that with, in licensing with cumulative impact zones, which restricts licensing from premises from where there are problems, being shrunk down to just very narrowly defined areas. Where previously we've used them as an area deterrent and therefore they become less effective. I wouldn't want to see the same things applied to Article Four directions regarding the spread of HMOs and concentration HMOs. Yes, I completely agree councillor Richie. Do any officers want to come in on that? Because I've got quite a few speakers at the moment. So if there's nothing else to say on Article Fours, folks, no? Okay, good. Okay. So councillor McKenna and councillor Gruen.
Thank you Chair. A lot has been covered, but I'm particularly concerned flood risk management, starting at paragraph 311. As you know, we live pretty near to the Kirkstall Valley and we've seen some horrendous flooding in and around my area. But I'm not sure if I understand the response from us in 312. It starts off well enough, but I'm not sure if we covered the issues very well. I'm not suggesting anything. If I can, if I can just draw you to the final paragraph. It says, "In addition, the ability for buildings to be brought back into use quickly after flooding may depend on the quality of material used." That I understand, but then it says, "For example, water resilient paint", etcetera. Well, I'm sorry, that doesn't, that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem realistic to me when we're talking about water resilient material. I'm sure, I know Sarah, I know Caroline, lovely kids by the way Caroline, my grandson keeps muscling in as well. We all understand that. I'm sure we can do much, much better than that. And I'll leave it there. I am reassured with what Martin has said, that's not the final draft. And hopefully when this is the final draft, it'll be far more punchy and we'll come up with much, much better examples than water resilient paint. I don't even know what it is. Thank you Chair.
Fair enough. I'm sure your officers have taken note of that. No, councillor Gruen.
Thank you Chair. I just want to say how supportive I am of all the strengthening that's gone on around design. I'm really pleased to see that we are turning our attentions to this area. And I agree with the officers' views about the use of the word beauty and beautiful. I quite agree. And I think good design or excellent design even would be, is a much more objective term and would not necessarily lead to the kind of discussions that we sometimes drift into in plans panels, which become a sort of designed by committee because people are thinking about perhaps what their own taste is rather than what the nature of good design is. So I absolutely support that fully. Listening to Martin and putting it into context, do we think that the strengthening of this wording around design and the design code is likely to have an impact on what developers actually produce?
Yep. Thanks councillor Gruen. I think what it'll enable us to do is prepare policies locally that have a stronger design focus. So I think what, what this gives us is more coverage nationally to go further in terms of good design. What it doesn't necessarily do, and it goes to councillor Anderson's point about viability, is ensure that that can be delivered alongside all the other planning requirements that we're seeking to deliver consistently in a city like Leeds. And if I, if I may just illustrate that quickly, one of the aspects of the bid to CLG was that in their design typologies, they were looking at what they called a city centre type design and what they called an inner suburb design. And our pitch to CLG was, well, that inner suburb type design may look very different depending on which part of the inner suburbs you're in, in a large northern city like Leeds. So we would really welcome illustrating what that looks like. Because it might look very different if you're in an edge of the city area experiencing some change like Mapgate to if you're looking at the sort of Kirkstall corridor. So, so there's more to be done councillor. But I think until the government sort of finalise what the purposes of planning are and clarify that, which is, I think, what this panel suggested before, that the purpose of planning is to deliver sustainable development and tackle climate change and deliver good design for health and wellbeing, et cetera. We may still be in this balancing exercise, which in some cases may see design pushed down by other considerations.
Yeah.
Can I come back Chair? Yeah, well, that was my worst fear, that it would be pulled down by other considerations. Because I have always found, since I became involved in planning, this issue about things being overall policy compliant, very, very difficult to understand. And I'm sure councillor Campbell will agree that he's often of the view that it should be entirely policy compliant or not be approved. And design has constantly been the poorest neighbour, the poorest partner. And is there anything that we can do in our deliberations that would try to prevent that happening?
I think that's a million dollar question Caroline. Well, a several billion dollar question actually. It's probably a useful point to bring Mr Feeney in, I think.
Thank you. Thank you Chair. I was just going to add a number of points, but I think you've picked them up really with Martin as well. I think it's a fair comment about the balance of overall considerations and where does design sit with that? And I think the key issue is it doesn't sit in isolation from all of these other policy considerations as well. So, you know, we do need to understand within the context of the planning white paper, what status design is going to have and how does that sit more widely with place making and the climate emergency agenda, along with economic recovery? You know, there are all of those factors that need to be brought together and also health and wellbeing is a key consideration. So I think what we, what we need is some clarity rather than ambiguity and something which is trying to amplify the importance of design without any explanation about these other equally important policy topics at the same time. And I think in terms of what's in front of us, it does present major opportunities for Leeds. I mean, we have a very positive track record in terms of providing and preparing design guidance over many years on many different topics and also working with neighbourhood planning groups as well in order to try and amplify local issues in relation to design. However, you know, I do accept some of the comments that have been raised about Article Fours and some of these other issues because there are tensions, aren't there? Because if amplifying design excellence is a way of stifling the need for Article Four directions or also potentially ignoring permitted development allowances, which can have a detrimental effect on design character and place making, then there's an inherent tension, isn't there, between these different pieces of work and the objectives that they have? But all of that said, I think it's very positive that as a council, we are putting together this pilot bid because that would enable us to sort of enter the fray, so to speak, in terms of trying to come forward with a working, practical methodology for a complex urban geography and settlement pattern of the place that is Leeds and hopefully bring some insight to that. Because I think we need to try and draw together some thinking around these different typologies and how that reads to the different character areas of Leeds, without it being too prescriptive either. Because the document would need to deal with unforeseen issues as well as allowing a degree of latitude in terms of embracing what the future might look like. And I'm pleased therefore that we've been able to throw our hat into the ring and we can update members on that and the process to help shape what that methodology might be. So there is some follow-up planned on that, subject to what the government say about our bid. And then just finally, in response to councillor Anderson's comment about the documentation, we did actually put a link, I think, in Para One of the report to the main documentation, which would enable members to click on to the guidance. We didn't want to overwhelm the papers by adding the full document to it. But it is, it is there in the bundle through a, through a link, if that's helpful Chair. Thank you.
It is. No, thanks very much for that. Yeah, I mean, ultimately this all brings, needs bringing together, doesn't it? Just, just on that, councillors Gruen and Anderson, are those old hands on new hands? Whichever one's a new hand.
Mine is a new one. Mine is a new one.
Okay, far away.
Well, what was, it was, I'm still waiting on answers to some of the questions I raised. You Chair asked a question about the deadline. The way I interpreted your question was, is it feasible to have a workshop before the deadline date? Yes or no? And even if the answer is no, then fine. I don't think you got an answer, but you didn't get the full answer and it didn't help me. And also my other question about how small have these design code units to be? What level are we going to take it down to? If it's citywide, fine, that's what we've got to work within. But if we are allowed to take it down and devolving it down to a smaller economic unit, and I think we should go for that level of down because we've got some very good neighbourhood plans that sit close together in terms of the geography of them. There's a number of them coming together, so we could pilot that out. I'd give you an example of the outer north east, where there's a number of villages have got neighbourhood plans and it might be worthwhile having a design code for that particular area. I'm just looking for guidance. I didn't get an answer to the workshop point or on what size of unit we're talking about.
Okay, let's go back to front. What about the officers? What about the size of unit? What are they talking, what are the governments talking about?
It's left to local discretion. So they talk in the National Model of Design, they talk about that's different types of guidance will be suitable or most suited to different scales. So they sort of talk about master plans being most suited to a site scale. But then you'd have, you could have area-based guidance or sort of wider areas. So it is really left to local discretion about what's most appropriate for your areas, which I think is a positive because that's, you know, I think as a city, we'd like to make that decision about where it is most valuable for us to have guidance in place. And I certainly agree that, you know, neighbourhood plan level, there's potentially a role for that as well as looking at sites and more overarching guidance as well.
Okay. That's going to be an interesting challenge for us to get to the right areas, the right levels and the right areas in Leeds. That's interesting. Okay, in terms of, in terms of a workshop, yeah, I mean, we have used those in the past, haven't we? I think, thinking about timescales and the fact that we're moving into election season, I think that might be tricky. I don't know what other members think. There's quite a lot of work we need, officers need to do in order to respond to that, to McClugge's timescales. Obviously we're feeding into that and we're going to get another chance to feed into some more of that. But I'm just putting it out to the floor then, wanting to be helpful, put it out to the floor. I'm not sure a workshop is viable, given we've got, for members especially, but officers' perspective, I'd be keen to hear as well.
Chair, I think, oh sorry.
Well, David had his hand up and then councillor Rich had his hand up.
Sorry, sorry Chair. I mean, just on the workshop, Marty might have a comment as well. I mean, I'm just thinking about the logistics of setting something up before the deadline. I think what might make sense would be if we are successful with a pilot bid, there may be some potential at that point to have a workshop session to help frame what our design code might look like. And if we are engaging with CLG, if we are successful with our bid, some of the wider comments that members have made and the points raised by councillor Anderson's as well about the specificity of design code areas, if I could call it that, we could try and flush some of that out with CLG if we've got a seat at the table with our, with our bid in place. And then using that interaction with CLG, so to speak, we could feed that into developing our own local methodology, which is enabling us to develop something which is fit for purpose for Leeds and the variety of characters that we have. So that might be a more productive way of addressing it. I don't know if Marty wanted to add to that, but just some initial thoughts, Chair, if that's helpful.
Oh, it is very helpful. Martin, do you want to add to that? And then councillor Richie?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I was going to say, just so that members are comforted by this, there's clearly a shift in the approach to taking account of design for which members will need, certainly members of development plan panels will need significant training in. So we're definitely conscious that we need to follow this up. But at the moment, there are the changes to the NPPF itself, which are kind of outlined initially within the report. And I think officers have captured members' responses to those. Then there's the national design code itself, which we're offering to test for government. So, but, but, but government aren't seeking detailed comments on that at the moment. Rather, what we're doing is testing that for them. So I think as long as members are happy through the comments they've made today with the substance within the report on the NPPF, the more detailed technical design aspects, we'll definitely need to come back and have more in-depth discussions with this panel on.
Yeah, okay. I mean, to all intents and purposes, this is the workshop, given the timescales on things in large part. Okay, councillor Richie?
Thank you. I've got to be careful not to move back here. The dog's just settled in behind my channel. Yeah, that'll be a dog's tail, so try and keep steady. Yeah, just on, this is meant to be helpful. I hope this isn't, I'm not speaking out of turn here. 3.26, detailed response in conjunction with the exec member. I dread to think councillor Hayden's got a hell of a job taking on an exec role. I don't know where to start and she has my sympathies and best wishes. I'm sure you'll make a great fist of it. But I don't know how you feel about having, you know, you've had one meeting, you've listened to comments, but, you know, there's a lot of experience around this table, whether you feel it would be helpful if that report kind of got circulated to the members of the panel and maybe additional comments before you signed it off. As I say, I hope, and that's not meant to be patronising or it's meant to be helpful because I realise you'll have a hell of a lot on you, well, you have a massive portfolio dealing with everything in such a short time scale might be difficult. So it's a helpful suggestion. If I've spoken out of turn, well, I can always be thrown off.
Can I, can I come in, come in Chair? Thank you. And I hope I'm not lagging behind my, no, that's really useful. Councillor Richie, thank you Kevin. It is a big portfolio and I am learning. I had a call in yesterday, so I'm four, five, nearly six years on scrutiny. I've never done a call in. So, yes, so it is a huge learning curve and I would be incredibly grateful because there is, just listening to this meeting today, just how many, the experience and knowledge around this virtual table is extraordinary. So I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
It is an excellent idea. Thanks for that Kevin. Thanks for Helen. And yeah, we'll take that approach. That'll be fantastic. Councillor Anderson, is that a new hand?
Yes. One of the concerns that I've been talking to Martin Elliott about is the city centre and the impact of government policy on what may or may not be happening in our city centres in terms of permitted development. So in paragraph 314, in terms of the second sentence, it does highlight, it brings to the surface. Now, I've got my personal views. Martin heard some of my views yesterday about that. But I don't think we've discussed that fully today to give any feedback to officers or to have the debate within us as a plans panel on what our views are on the government strategy, good or bad. But, you know, we've got to have a view, I think.
So is my phone going? Well Barry, now's your time. So could you just, what was that paragraph reference again? Apologies?
314, 314, second sentence, 314 second, I mean, because the government appear to be going down the line of allowing more and more permitted development. Now, there will be some parts of the city that will fit smoothly in with. There'll be other parts of the city that will not sit in with. Now, I'm not going to Now, I'm not going to name any particular site for fear of any frightening us up anybody. But there are one or two city centre sites that if they were to be coming forward, you know, how are we going to be protecting, say, the retail elements and also to allow housing on the top? And what we're going to be doing about green infrastructure associated with it? I think all of this is, and is, when we talk about town centres, I'm not just necessarily talking about Leeds City Centre. I'm talking about some of the other centres that we've got around the city as well, what impact it would have. Now, I know that there is a debate going on that so far, a lot of developers haven't yet come forward with many schemes. So there is that at the moment. But there is no doubt that the government thrust is to start getting that looked at more and more. And so what are we getting on the stocks? What comments are we feeding back to government about the potential impact of it? And let's have a debate on that subject, to be quite frank.
Yeah. No, I don't disagree with any of that. Also, if you're not going to bring Martin in in a sec, but also if you add into that the changes to youth class orders that have come into force, there's a whole milieu of potential impacts on the city centre. So Martin, on that.
Yep, thanks, Chair. So I think what I could suggest is that we come back in maybe July with a paper that maybe pulls a few things together from a city centre, town centre, local centre perspective. Because this panel's had updates on the Class E proposals of government and on permitted development. But, and I suppose within those papers, it's been noted the implications on town and local centres. But what you haven't had is something that maybe brings that around a narrative that you could discuss what other parts of the council, for example, through management initiatives are doing in town and local centres, certainly post-COVID, which is very important and the role of planning in that. And I think bringing this panel back up to date with what the current policies say about town and local centres and actually what the role of planning may be. So I'm perfectly happy if that helps councillor Anderson to come back to this panel, drawing a few of those threads together.
I mean, the thing he does from my part, I'm not sure about councillor Anderson, but Barry, if you want to come back on that?
I mean, if that's what the majority of people on the panel, I'm happy to go along with it. I'm just conscious that the government are pushing this agenda further and further up. And by November, by July, we might find that circumstances have got out of control through no fault of anybody on Leeds City Council.
No, no.
Of anybody on Leeds City Council. Because, as you said, we're coming up to election period. So we're not going to be able to necessarily concentrate as heavily on that from, let's say, the end of March, right through to the middle of May, at least. We're not going to give it 100% attention. What happens in the interim? How are we feeding back to government? Because the officer obviously felt serious enough to put it actually in their report, which I think. I think so. What I'm wanting to do is to give the officer some further comments so that they can beef up whatever the officer was planning to put in anyway and give the officer some guidance. I'm actually, believe it or not, trying to be helpful to help the officer put more meat on the sentence that they put in. That was where I was coming from.
No, that's helpful, councillor Anderson. David, you've put your hand up.
It was just to add, Chair, I mean, I fully understand and support councillor Anderson's concerns about increasing PD. I think we have reflected that in previous consultation documents that we've been able to respond to when we've been able to do that. I think part of the challenge here is that some of those PD relaxations have been introduced without any consultation and they're already in place. I mean, the point is here, we're trying to influence what's going to happen next. So I think if councillor Anderson has some helpful comments as part of the paper that's been submitted today, Chair, we can incorporate those as part of the response for the 27th. And then, as Martin says, we could bring together a wider piece, which is trying to draw some of these strands together in terms of the various other council initiatives, which are seeking to bring vitality and viability to city centre locations, notwithstanding the challenges we have around PD. Thank you, Chair.
No, thanks. That's sensible. And if, and also Barry, if it acquires a head of steam that we need to get together, especially for it, then we can convene. That's not a problem at all. One of the many miracles of Zoom is that this is a lot easier to do than all having to go to six and sevening and book space there, as it were. So, yeah, we can certainly convene for that as a, with a city centre focus. I have no problem with that. I don't think any other members would. Right, on that, I think we can draw the item to a close, looking at an array of faces. All seem to be in agreement. That's excellent. I think, unless I'm mistaken, that's our last substantive item for the day. So I think I can draw the meeting to a close. Excellent. Well, listen, thank you all very much for your attendance and all.